Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, families and friends. I want to welcome you to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. Also, I would like to take the opportunity to welcome our city staff that is with us today and my colleagues on council. I want to acknowledge their presence. In addition to, first, I'll mention our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Levondun Graham Williams, and our chief deputy city clerk, Ms. Anita Sharad. Good to have everybody here and to have the team all present. I would now ask that everyone please stand for a moment of silence and afterwards, we will follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To my colleagues, would you please note your attendance electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay, we now have the minutes of a called meeting on April 7, 2025, a called meeting on April 8, 2025, and a regular meeting on April 8, 2025. Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the achievement of one year in service to our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter. He's completed successfully one year and we look for many more to come. So, sir, I just want to thank you. In addition, I want to take a moment to acknowledge some very special guests here tonight. I would ask that Ms. Shonzetta Williams, who is the president of Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and all of the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Portsmouth Alumni Chapter, please stand and be recognized. It is our pleasure to have you with us tonight, ladies. Thank you for your advocacy and work in the community. Now, I will ask that, Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we proceed with the agenda, I will just move to public hearing item 25-111. But I want to acknowledge and let all of the citizens know that during this public hearing, because we are discussing the annual operating budget for FY 2026, if you have not signed up to speak to these public hearing items, you can come forward and speak on any one of the public hearing items that we will discuss tonight. If you should decide to come forward and speak, you will state your name and your address, and you will have five minutes on these public hearing items. So with that, our first public hearing item, item 25-111, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Public hearing to solicit citizen comments on the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on this public hearing item, action plan, at this time? If you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Nanette Holly. My address is 1120 Alcindor Road. Hello, council members. My name is Nanette Holly. Born and raised in Portsmouth, Virginia. It will be four years in November since purchase of my home. I've come before you today to see change. You may ask what change? One of the biggest lies sold was that the casino would be Las Vegas style. If anyone has actually traveled to Las Vegas, they knows the strip is live from restaurants to adventurous things you can do. Each hotel on the strip has multi-level casinos in them and malls, not to mention everything else beyond the strip you see and do. Victory Boulevard can be the same. Yes, there are some hidden jewels, but Victory Boulevard, from Victory Crossing all the way down to Victory and George Washington should have top-notch restaurants and stores. We are the only city with one hospital, and I'm not talking about the naval. And that hospital doesn't even have a birth center for our women. Our women birth our babies in other hospitals and in other cities, which those cities collect on. We have one CVS for those of us who live in Cavalier Manor and Victory at Newport, and that's not in walking distance. Where are the urgent care centers to take care of ourselves and our children? We have none. I have to go to the casino to show my license just to go to Starbucks for coffee. There is a big lot of land in front of TCC that would be a great place for a town center. Every other city has gotten that light bulb and their cities are booming. Newport News has a town center. Hampton has a town center. Virginia Beach has a town center. Chesapeake has an unofficial town center filled with multiple restaurants, adventures, and clothing stores. One thing all have in common is Barnes &amp; Noble in the vicinity. Are we not intelligent enough for our kids? Are we not intelligent enough for us to have a Barnes &amp; Noble? Speaking of not enough, why is Farm Fresh still here? It's nothing farm or fresh about it. It stinks. It's dirty, and it's better food than Walmart. What do we have to do to bring Publix, Kroger, Harris Teeter to the community? Leggins even better, I would love it. Every city and each community have multiple shopping centers with restaurants and great experience. There are vacant lots where surge parks and trampoline parks, even small water park beaches can be made even across from Farm Fresh on Missy Elliott Boulevard. Ninety-five percent of my shopping is in other cities. Even down to spring break, nothing in the city for our teenagers except for Leggins on Airline Boulevard. When Norfolk stops lying and actually builds their casino, what will you have to stop the people from going there and staying there? There is a huge vacant lot in Cavalier Manor where Bonneville used to be. Why isn't there a Publix or Kroger for us along with few restaurants in a small shopping mall strip? At one time, Suffolk looked like they were always in poverty. Not anymore. We are looking like we popped out in 1980s with a few exceptions. Cavalier Manor and Victory Newport deserve bars, rooftop restaurants, movie theaters, skating rinks, entertainment, everything for our children and us to vibe and groove and grow into. Urgent care centers across Portsmouth, not just at Victory, but across Portsmouth, adventure parks and more. This casino brings in 23 to 26 million a month, if not more. I see Norfolk softball scoreboard is broke amongst other things, including parking on the grass. There should be an actual parking lot. Restaurant real estate taxes taken over, took over five grand out of mind, and it's going up. Fix these problems. Give Portsmouth hope. Let's turn Portsmouth from Pistol City to Picture City. It's so pretty, so many things to do, so many places to eat, not just old town and product. We had to stop and take a picture. Rest in peace the 1980s, hello to 2025. Show me why I should continue to vote for you. If this is already in progress, what is the update?
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this public hearing item is dealing specifically with Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. So when you come up to speak on this public hearing item, you really need to speak to what is germane to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Okay? Thank you.
Pretty much she said a lot.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Shilla Joseph. I missed coming here for a while. I had to take a break, first of all. But anyway, 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. The young lady that just spoke was asking the same kind of questions I was asking, and I was just telling my son just today, I came downtown and I mentioned about, just a small example, we had potholes at our city hall, but finally, I mentioned it to someone and I see they closed up. But I have to go to Chesapeake, and when I run out of ink, it costs me a hundred and some dollars for a pack of ink, and we don't even have places except Walmart, and they don't keep stuff in stock. So I would like to see something come back to our city like we had one time that we could go and shop at in this city instead of spending money where we paying our taxes at. I'm gonna just keep it like that. Have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. This public hearing is open to anyone who wishes to speak on this item, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. If you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. We will now move to item 25-112. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item we are considering? And this is item A. This is a three-part. So there's item A, there's item B, and item C. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2026.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come and speak to this public hearing item? If you wish to speak, you come forward and state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Okay, gentlemen, which is it gonna be?
I'm a hard act to follow. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. I'm Mark Gaduldegutrowski, 2713 Sterling Point Drive, ZIP Code 23703. I missed the first bite of the apple, but I was interested to see the presentations from other citizens, and I was happy that there were a number of my fellow citizens speaking on this important item. So what I'm here to ask for is to renew my request for doing whatever it takes to make it possible for me not to be present here, but to be present by the magic of electronic communication, as I was during the pandemic. I know you have the know-how. So this could be an equipment problem, it could be a personnel problem. I will speak about the equipment possibilities in the next item. If it's a personnel problem, hire somebody. It might be a part-time person to help with the facilitation, whatever. I don't think it's going to break the budget, but I have a suggestion for how to stay in balance. My second item is a rescission of 75% of the raise that your predecessors voted you in accordance with the permission from General Assembly to do so. I believe that you should receive a $5,000 increase this coming year, and then two years thereafter, your successors or you who are carrying over can consider another 5,000, and so on, through the next cycle, four cycles. But I'm willing to be a sport and let you start in this very next fiscal year. The other item I want to talk about in this particular category is the supplement that the city manager recommended for retirees. As I have stated before, the pension plan, the legacy pension plan for the city of Portsmouth is something that has cost the citizens dearly, and it's not necessarily because of the requests from retirees for additional money. It has been the manner in which your predecessors have gone about satisfying other requests, which is to say they weren't paid for. And so, over a period of decades, councils voted additional money to retirees that wasn't actuarially advisable, that wasn't being paid for in any other way, which meant we, the citizens, ended up with the biggest debt in the 29 years that I've lived here. $169 million to backfill the pension funds, the pension trust funds, because council did not act in a fiscally responsible manner. So you had a request last meeting, not only to throw an additional $1.4 million at the problem of no raises, which really isn't a problem, except there's something called pension envy. The legacy pensions do not have the resources to satisfy the desire for increases, whereas those people who elected to go with the state pension plan are getting them because it's a bigger system and it's not a closed system. This has become a problem that has been foisted on us, the taxpayers. Many of us are drawing pensions of our own, and nobody is guaranteeing us a 5% or a 1%
Thank you, sir.
Increase.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is... Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Hon. Renette McSwain. I am a sitting school board member. I'm not coming up here to speak on behalf of the school board. I'm coming to speak on behalf of my experience since I've been elected. We really need for you to consider fully budgeting this school board. I have no doubt that you guys are gonna do what's right. I know most of you, and I am confident that you are. But I just want to give you my experience since I've been up there on the school board. I don't know how many educators have contacted me personally just to tell me that they're getting ready to leave, that they didn't get paid enough to deal with what they're dealing with. And I know that we always like to say it's not always about the money, but for the most part, it has been with me. I have sat in classrooms with the educators just to let them know that somebody is concerned and somebody is willing to fight for them. I'm asking you, as our City Council members, to listen to Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk. Y'all know me, most of you know me personally. I'm not one to just go with anything. If I see something that's not right, I'm gonna let you know it's not right. At this time, I'm pleading with you to please listen to them and give us what we need for our teachers to maintain. We have a whole bunch of teachers that are not certified in the positions that they are in, but they're doing their best, but that's gonna reflect on our children. And y'all know I was one about those tasks. If we don't have the adequate staff to teach our kids, they're not going to learn the adequate way. So I just ask you to please consider fully funding the school board and listen. And at that point, if anything or anyone needs to be held accountable, hold me accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our school board colleague partner, because this is a partnership, I believe, between the city and the schools, and the city's responsibility to support our schools, which then supports overall, really, all of our priorities. Just a reminder, you know, our city manager, I stated his priorities several times, the top one be being enhancing public safety, number two, strengthening infrastructure, number three, improving city processes, and number four, advancing technology. And you don't hear the word "public education," but just to be clear, that touches, public education touches all four of those aspects, because you cannot separate public safety from public education, because we know that education drives, the future education drives opportunity. So I support finding that funding to make sure that we can fully support all the school requests. There's not a, coming from the school board, being the parent of two children in Portsmouth Public Schools, being a product of Portsmouth Public Schools myself, there is not a, this is nice to have, this is a need. Because when we also talk about people moving to our city, developing our downtown, developing our innovation district, you have to make sure you have quality schools to continue for people to buy real estate here, for people to move here with their families, and for people to stay here. So the requests from the schools, I've already had my 101 budget meeting, the manager knows where I stand on it, and finding that additional, I think it's a $3 million shortage, so that the schools can fully support their staff compensation pay plan, as well as the additional innovative curriculum that they have already developed and rolled out, including the CTE Center, including dual-language immersion, including Starbase, including all of those other programs, the Go Tech Labs in the middle schools. So there's not a, oh, take from this pot to give to this pot. If we want our schools to continue to be innovative, competitive, to provide opportunities for our future, and to provide support for the people that we say live in Portsmouth, work in Portsmouth, stay in Portsmouth, that's what I feel is a priority. So I want to thank you for coming to speak and support of that today. And then I have one more question. I didn't have a chance to ask it in the public works, public meetings, sorry. Regarding that Mr. Gadowsky just came and talked about the retiree system, our retirees are here too. One other question I don't think was clarified, is our pension system currently underfunded? It is? Okay.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
Councilman Thomas, "underfunded" is not the right word to use. We have a funding gap between where we shoot. We don't, our assets, remember we talked about the assets in there, and our liabilities? We have liabilities that have not been funded yet. So we have some unfunded liabilities in our pension system. That doesn't mean it's underfunded. That just means that what is gonna cost us to pay everybody, we don't have all that money in the bank yet. And so we're gonna have to put that money in the bank at some point through the life of the pension.
So, thank you for that clarification. So for the discussion now of asking, okay, for this, I was going in there about not having to do this back and forth all the time, or trying to find that solution, meeting what the retirees are asking for this year with the 1.4 million obligation, but also understanding that there is a gap that we need to provide for. We have to provide for, and finding that so that they are getting the right level of what they should receive from the pension system, if I'm understanding that correctly, that, yes, Mayor.
Well, I think one of the things for clarification, they are getting the right funding right now, because they're getting the benefit that they signed up for and that we supported in funding. So they are, so the dollars that we're paying now is funding the liability as was stated, but in terms of the payments that they're getting, they're getting the payments that they're entitled to.
But we need to ensure that for future payments, we shore up that fund to make sure it supports the retirees still on the system.
And that is why we're paying the debt service and all those things. That's what that's for, to ensure that that particularly plan is in place until the last retiree gets their last check. That is the reason that the city took out the obligations and that continues to pay the debt service on the obligation, so that when that last person checks in to get their check, those dollars are there.
We can discuss later. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers that want to come speak on this particular public hearing item? If you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Colin Alexander, retired firefighter with 28 years, public safety firefighter. Lived in the city of Portsmouth most of my life. The presentation y'all just had in there, I don't, my numbers don't match. Not surprising. The 1.4 million is the same thing it takes to fund the $1,500 outside the budget, I mean, outside the pension system. You take that 1.4 million, put it in the pension system, and fund that one year, that one step, for 5%. I don't understand where these numbers come from. You can make a lot of numbers, do what you want to do with it. But the purpose, the problem with this is, I don't understand how you come up with, we came up with 1.376961 for the 5% step. First step, and yes, if you get the first step, you fund it from now on. They said 2062 or something, when we all die, that's what they're looking at. And the question you just asked about in the future, they're not making any plans for future, they're talking about you never get a raise, you never get nothing. Right now, if you looked at 2013, when we had our last raise, you're talking about a 34.5% we should be getting right now because of the loss of raises, because of matching cost of living. But they sold this bill of goods to six, five of you. I think two voted the way they should have voted. If you look at the budget, if you look at the budget items that, I had a list of them, that some of the departments are getting this year, this year, we're talking about a little bit of 1.4 million, right? Finance, finance, 55%, 55% increase in finance. City manager, salaries, over 7.5%. Legislative affairs, over 12.5% in salaries. City treasurer, over 5.5%. Finance, the one I just talked about, 55% increase in salaries in finance, and we're talking about 1.4 million to fund the 5% for one year. Yes, once you put it in the pension system and it comes out, it's gonna come out forever. This stifling that we have, and they've already tried to phase it out, they've already tried to phase it out. Last year, when September, when I came before this council, when it was supposed to be 1,500, the finance guy was here, and he said, "We'll give them the 15% this year," which was last year, we got it in December, "but next year, we're gonna do..." to do 12 point, $1,250." That's what showed up in the budget. The next two years, they looked at $1,000 apiece. They ain't, they ain't figuring on nothing for inflation or nothing else. And the, and for, for what they, what they just put, sold this bill of goods, that it's going to cost $12 million from now on every year, I just don't believe it, there's no justification for that. 1.4 million is the same, if you, if you given a, and, and one of them said, "The money managers don't like it outside the, the pension." That's right, they don't. They don't like, they like the cap. It was set at, it was set at one of the budget, I mean, at the last Retirement Board by a finance person, "Don't worry about this cap of 80%," he told, he told the Retirement Board this, "Y'all don't have to worry about this 80% cap, because y'all can make it 90%, you can make it 100%, you can make it 110%." In the first place, the Retirement Board doesn't do that, this council right here does that. And, and the cap was put on to stop us from getting anything out of this pension system forever. That's how they going to finance it. One said, "We shouldn't take it out of the backs of the retirees." Well, that's what they're doing, taking it out of the backs of the retirees. They're figuring on doing this over the next
Thank you, sir.
Next number of years.
Thank you, sir.
Never give us a raise, never give us a raise. The widows don't get anything
Sir, you are out of order, your time is up.
Supplement, unless they get it at the time.
Sir, you are out of order, your time is up. Thank you. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So for the folks who are tuning in now but missed the work session, just to clarify some numbers, the council currently has built into the budget an $8.2 million payment into the legacy retirement system. That's the debt service that we're paying on the legacy retirement system. That's in the budget. What the legacy retirees are asking for is that we add another $12.8 million to the budget to fund a pay raise in the retirement system that's going to last for, forever. And it's not just 12, 12.8 million dollars this year, it's 12.8 million dollars this year, 12.9 million the next year, 12.9, 12.9, and on and on and on. So what the city council did come to consensus on during the work session was to fund the $1,500 per retired, legacy retiree, which is ultimately what the retirees asked us to do. And the cost, as Mr. Alexander points out, is 1.4 million dollars. So we have asked the city manager to include 1.4 million dollars in the current budget so that that $1,500 per retiree is funded as part of the budget and not after the fact when the budget is done. And so the retirees are going to, the legacy retirees are going to get, each retiree will get their $1,500 stipend, and we'll come back and look at it again next budget year as we committed to do. What we did not commit to do was to increase the payment into the retirement system from eight to nine million dollars a year, which is what we're currently committed to do, to 21 to 23 million dollars a year, which is what it would take to keep the retirement system solvent until the retirees finish collecting from the retirement system. We're not going to do that based on the consensus of the council tonight. It wouldn't be responsible of us to ask the taxpayers to increase property tax by 12 cents in order to pay $12 million into the retirement system to keep it solvent. We want the legacy retirees to get their retirement. We want them to get their retirement all the way till, until they, they expire. And the only way we can do that is to continue paying down the debt service, eight to nine million dollars a year, to ensure that the retiree account remains solvent until the last person collects their last retirement check. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No, no, sir, you do not have the floor. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, so, Mr. Garland, we've talked several times, and I just wanted to say, the information presented
Sir, please have a seat. I didn't, I didn't ask, I, I am the chair of, sir, sir, I am the chair of this meeting, and I give you the permission to come. So please have your seat, thank you.
Well, Mr. Garland, the information that was just presented, yes, that $12.8 million was a new number. So as the, the immediate need is to make sure, one, that the stipend does happen. I don't think that's a sustainable way to move forward, which is why we've been having these discussions and you've been presenting this plan to not have it. But the $12.8 million, I had, asked for some clarification on it. I'm going to try to provide my understanding of it, and I don't know, Mr. Manager, can I have Mr. Burke come if I need clarification? But this is what I understand, the $12.8 million is not, it's, it's a difference from the 1.4 million dollars one time, because to fund that additional 5% within the pension adds on, this, they determined this calculation to add on to the current debt that has to be paid out. And that debt can't, the timeline to pay that debt out is year 2037, is correct? So there's a limited time to then pay back what we would need to put in to make sure that the cost of living adjustments that we've been going back and forth year over year to receive would be paid within our debt fund. That's where my understanding, that's this $12.8 million calculation came from, which I asked for clarification on. So the, I don't think this is sustainable, I don't know the solution, though. So that you're not having to come every year. We didn't do the cost of living adjustment for years, there's been culpable reasons that this is the way it is, and it's not fully right, in my opinion, this is just my opinion. But to, to meet the immediate need now is why the, why I voted the way I did for the consensus, and why I'm asking those questions of, are we underfunded? How do we make this right so that, well, not make it right, but make it so that you, the pension that has not received any additional investment continues to, I guess, go along with the cost of living adjustments, to make sure that the people still on that system are receiving a, a pay that can support them in today's dollars? Those are kind of where my questions are. I don't think we get there today. What, what I was hoping we get to today is at least the stipend that would be equal of 1523, I believe, across the board, hopefully. But I personally still think there's, we have to do something so that this back and forth doesn't have to go forward, and also to be better stewards over what our obligations will be going forward for the future for our remaining retirees. That's just where I stand. And if I misquoted regarding the $12.8 million, Mr. Burke, please feel free to correct me. That was my understanding from that new number presented today.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers who wish to come and speak on this budget item? If you would come forward, you state your name and, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jack Leenthal, 159 Mariners Way, Moak, North Carolina. I'm a retired firefighter, and spent most of my, I was born and raised in Portsmouth, and lived most of my adult years here, and retired, and, and my wife wanted a, a house in the country, so had to go. But still come here to do my shop, and I was here today for medical visits and that sort of thing, so I still spend money in the city. First of all, not to play good cop, bad cop, that's not the case. Garland and, and several people worked very, very hard on this, and you worked, all worked very, very hard with your deliberations and meetings and, and your questions and that sort of thing. With respect to the unfunded liability, the way that, the path that it was chosen, Ms. Thomas, Councilman Thomas's, that ordinance was passed three, four years ago to not give any more employee raises out of the system until the system is 80% funded. The projection in 2021 by the same actuaries that you heard figures from today, in 2021, they, they stated that the, the system should be 74% funded by 2028, is what the projection was. That, that's, that's probably not going to happen, given what's going on with the stock market and that sort of thing. But it goes up, it comes down, it went up 1,017 points today, just after crashing yesterday 1,000 points. My point here is that we're here for a lot of people, and it does get emotional, we're here for a lot of widows who are living on kind of bare-bones stuff, and it does get emotional. And, but that doesn't detract from our responsibility to stand up for them. And again, thank you for your time, thank you for the stipend. Understand, please, if you will, that we will be approaching you again next year over the same issue, and if inflation keeps on going, like it's done over the last since 2013, reducing the, the buying power of, of what some of these folks are getting, and, and the legacy system does include the general wage workers, the, the cleaning ladies.
Thank you, sir.
So we're representing them too. And, but as, as we get closer to that point in time of getting 80% funded, which I, I personally don't see happening, but please understand that with the buying power being eroded, that we'll, we'll be back talking with you, and, and I want you to understand too, and, and our convictions, we're not going backwards, okay? If anything, we're going to be, you know, going forward for these people. And I appreciate your time, your effort, and, and your, your, your conviction to bake it into the budget. So that's it for me tonight, and again, thanks for your support.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Something that I just remembered mentioning as well is this 80% cap that I've been hearing, is, is that something that we can remove? I would like to discuss removing that cap. My understanding is that wasn't always part, and that's one of the reasons we're kind of where we are now. Can I get a little bit of history behind that, and then what it would mean and what would, what it would look like if we removed the 80% cap? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll ask the manager to, to put that all together and update you from the historical perspective so we could understand.
And the discussion about removing the cap.
Well, well, we'll have that discussion, that's something we can have as a discussion. But I want to say something as the mayor of the city, because it's important that you all understand, and that we convey the right message. There is not one person up here that doesn't understand inflation and the plight of it on some of our most vulnerable citizens, I will tell you that. And also, I want you to understand that, you know, we deliberate to do what's fair for 97,000 people in the city of Portsmouth, because at the end of the day, we have to ensure as a body that those folks, all of our people, have a quality of life, and they can live in their homes, and they can be in dignity. So I just want everybody to be careful when they come up here and make these allegations that suggest that some of the folks up here don't care. I can assure you, we have very engaged deliberations, and we give each and every one of you the opportunity to come before us and state your case. We have a lot of work to do, but we will not shy away from the work and doing ultimately what's right, what is right for the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. And sometimes in that process, we have to acknowledge, the city did do something, and they continue to do something to help our retirees. And that responsibility, I can assure you, having talked to everyone up here, we do not take lightly, sir, okay? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to come and speak on this beha, on behalf of this particular item? Seeing none, this item is closed. We will now move to Item B. And Madam Clerk, would you please read Item B?
Public hearing on the Recommended 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Program.
And we do have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godalde-Giotrofsky. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. So in the capital improvement budget, I am happy to see that we are moving forward on a couple of items that have been discussed at length, but there hasn't been much forward motion on. One of them is the construction of a combined public safety building in the city within the next three years. The other is the replacement of this building in the next three years. I think that that's an ambitious timetable, and I'm hoping that you can make it happen, because certainly the needs exist. I'd like to mention a couple of other capital projects that I'm not seeing quite as clear a picture on. City Park, we have had a number of open meetings on it with public participation, and there are some exciting ideas, there are some conflicting ideas. I'm not sure we've quite reached a consensus on what the final form should be, but I would not like to see that languish as we're moving ahead with the other. I don't know how much spare capacity we have to deal with City Park, but I'd like to see some incremental progress in that area. Additionally, among the shelfware in the planning department, there's a proposal that was vetted publicly and that I felt had a lot of things to commend it. It was called a water feature, and it was supposed to be sited here in the area that's slated for redevelopment. Essentially, it provides a buffer in the event of sea level rise that doesn't look like, it doesn't look like a seawall, it doesn't look like a barrier, it's sort of a flow-through approach along, along the model that the Dutch have used for years. So you make a space for the water. But in between times of high water, it serves as public space. You can have a platform, a venue for outdoor concerts, and other outdoor activities. You get out of the way when the hurricanes blow through, and you use it when it's dry enough to be used, and when it isn't, you can observe it as a scenic sight. That was not, that did not come with a high price tag, of course, we're talking five or six years ago when it was, when it was presented. But I would ask you to go back to that shelf and look at the work that was done and see if that's still a viable proposal. I think it is. In regard to the siting of the city hall replacement, I would like to say, keep it away from the waterfront, because I believe sea level rise is real, and it's not something you want to fight. I, I would call as two witnesses, Ms. Helene and Mr. Milton, they show you the power of Mother Nature unchecked. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And once again, on item B, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please read the next public hearing item?
Public hearing on proposed changes to rates and levies for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this item, Mr. Mark Godalde Yotrowski. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. I would like to talk about the personal property tax, which a lot of people dislike, and I'm not a big fan of it. But I think there is some reform that we could do in the way the subsidy from the Commonwealth is administered. There is a $20,000 threshold on personal vehicle valuations. And so on that first $20,000, there is a give-back using the Commonwealth's money to fund it. I'd like to suggest that we look at what the median price of a new vehicle is in 2025, because this structure was established a number of years ago, and as everybody knows, there is an upward trend in all things, almost all things, that are available to purchase. So if we adjust the threshold to be more in line with what the median price is for vehicles as a whole, there may be greater equity in that. I want to suggest at least doing the exercise and seeing what comes out. If not in this budget year, because we are very far along in the process, to look at it for the next fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Once again, item C, public hearing item on the proposed changes to rates and levies. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Nanette Holly, 1120 Alsona Road. I work in Portsmouth, live in Portsmouth. I don't shop in Portsmouth. But he touched on something, and I want to touch on part of it, which is real estate taxes. I believe that we are one of the highest amongst the cities, which is 1.3. I want to know why. There's nothing here. Other cities have, are booming, and they're less than us. Why are we at 1.3, and what can we do to bring it down? That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
I'm Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. Just last week and this week, I touched bases with Water Department for History, and then I touched bases on my payment of real estate tax and personal tax. Well, I wanted to know, is it called really harassing to ask for your real estate tax report or on your payment history? Because Mr. Page almost put me out. He asked the security to put me out. And I wanted to know, why am I being put out for asking for history record? Number two, this is a question for everybody to have an open mind. I'm trying to understand, my home paid for, and it's been 71 years ago, and I'm still paying tax. Also, my vehicle that I got for my son, it's been paid for four years and two years in advance, but no payments now, but we pay tax. If we don't pay the tax to the city, and this ain't just Portsmouth, it's a Commonwealth thing, if we don't pay that tax, then they could take our property. And we work hard as citizens to get what we want, but we are being shown by these rules and guidelines of people that work hard, you'll never own anything. You're just working to have something. And I looked at life, in my young age, my father brought me up, he had seven houses on the corner of where I'm at. And we had boat, horses, and named after me at that. We had vehicles, we had different things of business, but we wasn't treated the way at that time. But all the money that we spend over the years for so many things and being taxed, and I'm saying a little bit more, did you ask them for in July? I feel that need to come up another way to how to get rid of the tax and come up with doing something else, because I found out our taxes is paying for the streets and different other things we've been asking for help, and for everybody that worked for the city, includes you all and the fire department. I found that out on my own, because I never asked the question. So I just wanted to understand, how is it that someone that's under the Constitution can ask me to say that I don't pay my bill, and when I'm paying my bill and I got the record, but he got hostile and nasty with me? And I said, wait a minute, you never did that before. So why is you acting like that? Because I'm tired of you harassing my people for to give you records of what you paying. So my son came and asked for his property, they gave my son my property to me and my husband. So it's disorganized and giving information. It's a 2016 vehicle, and we paying at least about 500 or something for the tax a year on that vehicle, and it's a 2016, and it's $37 for fees. So I want somebody to work on how they can get rid of the tax, because a lot of homeowners, already homeowners are paid for that into everything they're getting. And the ones that's paying it now, it's going to get worse if you don't stop. All I got to say is that to open everybody's mind, the listeners and our leaders, how we can work together and do something to substitute something else than to be taxing us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishes to come and speak on this item, you can do so. State your name and address. You have five minutes. This public hearing item is closed. That concludes our public hearings for the evening. Our next agenda item is City Managers' Report, item 25-113. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Ordinance accepting four-for-life funds in the amount of $71,391.84 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and appropriated said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund budget for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services to purchase necessary EMS equipment, supplies, and training.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 25-114. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Ordinance amending and reordaining subsection 37 to 50B tow book to be maintained by the Chief of Police, additional fees of Division 1 of Article 4, tow trucks of Chapter 37, vehicles for hire, and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of modifying police tow list rates.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that concludes our items under City Managers' Report. We are now to the item of new business, item 25-115, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugel, are there any boards and commissions this evening?
There are not, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Item 25-116, items submitted by council members. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, the Legislative Affairs Committee, we had our first meeting of the year in regards to our 2026, well, yeah, 2026 package for next year. And so we're beginning the process of collecting legislative priority ideas. And so my asks to my members of council are to please come up with some legislative ideas based on your priorities, and if you all can present those to the committee by next month, I would say the second week of May, that could help us to begin the process of going over those ideas and also vetting new ideas. So matter of fact, I'm going to put a date on it, May 15th. May 15th will be the date, and then we will proceed from there. My second item is in regards to one of the topics that were brought up tonight, in regards to the school budget. And so, you know, there's been some questions in regards to the $6 million versus the $9 million, the extra $3 million. And so my colleague, Councilwoman Edmunds Thomas, did a very good job expressing her support for that additional $3 million. And myself, I've also spoken with Mr. Carter in regards to supporting, fully funding the needs of the school division with the extra $3 million. And so I guess my question tonight is to see if we can have a consensus, to see if we can move forward with that funding so that we can fully meet the ask of the school division, so we can make sure that we can retain our teachers and our staff in our school division.
Well, unfortunately, we all haven't had our discussions with the manager yet, so our mind is still pending. So once we have a discussion, I think that will be an opportunity to do that at that time. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Well, yes, I'm in agreement with, once our, once all our 101 budget meetings are completed, if it, if we can get a consensus on finding that additional money, if it means reallocated from another place, to find the additional funding for the schools, I would like to also agree with Councilman Tillage there to move forward with that. I was going to bring up also just something I brought up in the work session I wanted to bring to the public regarding the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, EV RIFA for short, in that I attended the first, my first meeting since Portsmouth last prior council decided to join, and they are asking for cities, or cities that belong to that group, to, you know, just start identifying if there's some type of projects that we, as a council or a city, want to maybe bring to their group. And basically, it's a political body that offers a cooperative agreement between localities. So if we have a project here that maybe we want joint funding, and we share the revenue, is my understanding, they're looking to see what cities have to offer. And I just wanted to, the same way that Councilman Tillage asked us to send him our legislative committee ideas, I don't want to be, I'm sitting on that board, but I'm not the voice for this whole council. So I would like us to, you know, maybe brainstorm some ideas of, or identify some possible opportunities if we want to present those opportunities to that regional authority for collaboration purposes here. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add to the school discussion that Councilman Hugel and I met with Dr. Bracy, our colleagues on school board yesterday, and continued our conversation about the budget, continued our conversation, more importantly, about how we will continue to work together and develop our relationship. We talked about obstacles that we've had in the past and efforts that we can create to move forward. So we're having conversations, and they will continue, and I look forward to developing a relationship with the school board as we move forward that will carry us forward in future years. Want to thank the Portsmouth Student Club for an invitation to speak with them last week. They are a group of ladies who are retired and interested in researching different topics. This year's topic was women in elected office, and I was grateful for the opportunity to share my experience with them. I'd also like to thank all of the organizers, Portsmouth United, for a successful Peace Week. We had an opportunity to participate through the Mercy Chefs Cooking Class Program, which was fantastic, and the opportunities for our youth to engage and be creative were wonderful, and we know that that fits very importantly into our mission to create more opportunities for public safety across the city. I lastly want to thank the organizers for the Portsmouth Invitational Tournament, and congratulate the Parks and Rec Department on live streaming it this year. I heard a lot of feedback from folks that enjoyed watching the games on TV, and so I hope that that's something they will be able to continue. So thank you for that new initiative.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
So last evening, we had the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force for the month of April to pile on to Councilwoman Bryant's comment. We had a debrief from Ms. Matthews, who runs Portsmouth United, regarding Peace Week. She called out several folks. I'm not going to call anybody out for fear of missing one or two people. There were a bunch of people who supported Peace Week over this past weekend, and as Councilwoman Bryant said, a huge opportunity for our kids to do healthy activities together all week long. So well done to Portsmouth United and all the grassroots organizations that work with Portsmouth United and participated in last week's Peace Week effort, and also to Chief Jenkins and our police department for the engagement from their perspective on Peace Week. Additionally, Chief Jenkins provided a preview of his quarterly forum brief, which is tomorrow evening at 206 High Street at 6:00 PM. So if you're interested in hearing the latest crime stats, Chief Jenkins will share those. Some good news that he shared with us last night, he's got goals for this current year of reducing homicides by 10%, violent crime by 20%, and we're well below the homicide goal at this point in the year, knock on wood, and tracking along the goal for violent crime reduction. So the numbers are trending in the right direction, so despite what you may see on social media or on the news, we're moving in the right direction. And I want to thank the police department and all of the folks that are involved in Portsmouth United for the work that they're doing to continue pressing with our understaffed police force to make those improvements. Finally, Ms. Matthews shared that we're in the process now of hiring the last of eight violence interrupters. The goal here is to put violence interrupters into our troubled neighborhoods and get the folks out on the street, meeting with folks, and interrupting violence before it happens instead of dealing with the victims after. And so another great effort as a result of the work going on by Portsmouth United, and all of that's going to continue to help us achieve our reduction in violence goals for this coming year. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. To address a couple of issues, I was able to attend the Citizens Police Academy. If you haven't attended that, it is a very informative board. They'll be having another one next year. To address Mr. Yotrowski's To address Mr. Metrovsky's issue on City Park, if you attended the retreat that we had, we, and City Manager, please correct me if I need correction here, we redirected to say there was too much controversy there, that we were going to add to what we already have, not change it significantly, but we wanted to redirect our attention to the sportsplex, was one of the items that happened at that. There's more details available if you'll see one of them after, they can give you some of the details. Lastly, as far as the school budget goes, I believe, Mr. Hugel, you had asked at one point for a list of the properties owned by the city and by the schools to help us look at some of these properties for the budget, and I don't know that I have received that list yet. Have you received that list?
We asked for a list of properties that belong to the city.
Yeah, I think, I think your microphone is off.
Yeah, sorry, thanks. So, we asked for a list of properties owned by the city as, from the discussion that we had at the retreat, and the managers got that to follow up on, I believe. I haven't seen it yet.
So, by the city, do we mean by the city and the schools, or just by the city?
By the city.
And if we have this, can we get the school list too?
What, what the city's own.
If I could add that request, add the school properties too, so that we could... Would you make that, or would I? Thank you. That's all, sir.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Two things, I, I know it's coming up. I see Madam President for Delta Sigma Theta on the non-agenda item speaker for later on, but I did want to recognize my beautiful sororities for their attendance and Delta Days at the City Council, and I won't take your shot, because I know you're gonna have something beautiful to say, but I just want to congratulate all the work that Portsmouth Alumni Chapter has been doing in the community. They have upcoming Second Annual Community Baby Shower Free Event. I'm sure they're gonna highlight, so I'm not gonna speak too much on it, but that speaks to some of the priorities for the chapter in how they have been active, been involved in voter registration, been involved in activities to mentor our young girls in Delta Gyms and Delta Academy, working and reaching directly out to those in need. So, I just want to highlight them. I, I love being a part of the Delta Sigma Theta sorority, and if not for even the prior sororities that served in the seat before me, our own Senator Pro Temp, Senator Eloise Lucas, our former Vice Mayor, Lisa Lucas Burke, our commonwealth attorney, Stephanie Morales, and so many more. I know I'm forgetting people, so just, just a few that comes to mind, even my prior, people don't know this, Assistant Principal, current City Councilwoman in Chesapeake, Ella Ward, that's also a part of our chapter. I just wanted to highlight them and thank them for their representation, not just here today, but every day, going up to the nation's capital, going up to Richmond to advocate for the needs here in Portsmouth. And also, I wanted to just say, you know, they're not new, it's not new to them, they're true to this, because public service, ancestorhood are really what our founders stood for, because we know Delta Sigma Theta is the only way. So, I just want to highlight them and thank them for coming. I also wanted to add one more note to the education piece of this, or really just the whole overall budget discussion, so thank you, ladies. Mr. Manager, when we met, there was a line item I wanted to make sure I don't lose sight of regarding, it was, I don't know, nine dash three under public safety allowances for about $700,000, because as we're having this discussion about finding the additional funds for education, you know, we've been combing through each line item and making sure that we have an answer to our citizens for every dollar that's spent, and you were gonna give me a kind of a, some details on what that, that line item was for, so that we can see if we can meet the school's ask for $84 million, whereas right now, we're proposing $81 million to meet all their needs for the, for the, this upcoming budget year. And next, also, City Attorney, you gave us this package earlier regarding the deadline, so I see that we have to approve our annual budget for educational purposes by May fifteenth. Is that the, so, if we are to do, move forward with this, you know, understanding how we can fund the school, the school's ask, what's the earliest that we can meet to kind of see what that looks like, to play with those numbers? Is that only in our one-on-one session? Will it come back to this type of public meeting for consensus, which Councilman Tillage was asking for? How's that timeline fit within that May fifteenth? Just trying to think about that for discussion purposes.
So, where the legal line goes, I, I just set the deadlines. I, I leave it to, I leave it to the manager to decide how he engages with council on that. The budget is his, so I think he's preparing to answer that. So, long as you don't do more, you know, it has to be two-by-twos, if you do it individually, if it's a, more than two of you, has to be a public hearing or in a closed session under the code.
Okay.
So, it would have to be one of those, one of those.
Okay, thank you.
It's yours. Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
I explained to her that I, I just set the deadlines and, and give the parameters on how to meet, but when and where and what that looks like is up to you.
Okay, thank you. The, the next opportunity to talk about this will be at the next work session, which is unfortunately the thirteenth, the twelfth.
The May twelfth.
Yeah, May twelfth will be the next opportunity to talk about this. So, between now and that time, we do have some other meetings set with Dr. Bracy. Prayerfully, we will have come to a conclusion at that time. We have something to present from his side and my side, to present back to you about how we're gonna meet the request. We'll bring that to you, let you deliberate on, because on, on the twelfth, I will need a definite what we're doing, because on the thirteenth, I will present that budget to you, to either pass or fail.
And that's, we're, that's, thank you for explaining that. That's where I thought it was gonna go and why I think it's a bit urgent, is where I think Councilman Tillage was going, that we, I don't know if we need a consensus the way we need it for the other budget items to move forward, for City Council consensus, like we needed a consensus for the retirees, the boat tags. Do we need the same type of consensus to say, hey, we want to move forward, this is a priority?
Again, I'm gonna just jump in on that, because that's a consensus. What you are talking about is a vote for the, for the full funding, and that option will come when it becomes an agenda item. That is going to be contemplated, whether, how schools are funded is already a priority. That consensus before was whether we make those things a priority. How and what that looks like is in your final vote. So, let's say you, you've already kind of expressed that, you'll talk about it in your one-on-ones. What we want to avoid is having consensus, because consensus is only a moment in time. It is not a, a commitment that takes you into another session. And so, the, it is clear to this council and the manager that school board funding is a priority. What that looks like and whether you agree with how he presents it is on your final vote, and that is a real vote. So, we need not play with consensus when it comes to school board.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, to stay on this topic of school board funding, my consensus, it might have been worded incorrectly. However, we need, what I'm seeking is for us to be able to be presented what the fiscal impact will be if we chose to go with an additional $3 million, in addition to the options that council would have to choose upon if we decided to add the $3 million. And that is imperative to have before adoption night, because if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, if my memory serves me correctly, my first year on council, we made a last-minute budget item, and there was members on this council that spoke out against that, and I do not want that to happen again. So, in order for us to be able to not make a last-minute decision, we need to have that information to us prior to May thirteenth. And so, my consensus would be for us to be able to get that information of what the fiscal impact would be if we did the $3 million, as well as what options we would be able to choose from if council chose on adoption night to go with the additional $3 million. I think that's important for us to understand before we actually vote on the thirteenth.
That is an appropriate use of consensus. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Manager Carter, you have the floor.
The, the only thing that I would push back on a little bit is, me and Bracy are meeting on this particular subject. If you want, if you take that out of our hands, that's fine, you can do that, but just know that we have those meetings scheduled.
It's not taking anything out of your hands or Dr. Bracy's hands, it's helping us to understand what the implications are. And at the end of the day, you know, you and Dr. Bracy will have those conversations, but I think it's important, because at the end of the day, the school board and city councils are the ones that vote on the budget. We need to understand fully what those implications mean, whether it's the additional $6 million or whether it's the total $9 million. And so, you know, I'm, I'm just asking for information, and if we can have it, if council, if council chooses on adoption night not to fully fund the request, then that's council's decision. But I think we, we, in order for us to make that decision, we should understand either way.
I understand what you're asking. You're just asking for some scenario.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, so are you okay with providing that information? Or I don't think we need to call for a consensus if that's what, what you find. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to echo Mr. Tillage's that I don't want to have a last-minute discussion with an argument over this. It'd be nice if all of us could be involved in a preliminary discussion before we get to the final vote. Secondly, we had a article in the news, in the TV this week by a newspaper reporter who reported that we had not taken action on a sewer item, the gentleman who had sewer in the road, and I had a bit to say back about it, that we, as a council, did take action on that and did direct you to have some action taken, and I wanted to make sure that we could get a consensus out to the public to rebut her accusation that we didn't take action on that.
So, 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 first of all, you, you know, we don't really need a consensus on that particular item. If there's a discussion or some information that you were presented with, perhaps from a citizen, I think that's a conversation that you should have with the manager to get the clear understanding as a councilman, and then, once we get the understanding, the, the manager with his staff, he can then report back and present that information. I don't believe that's something that we need to raise to a level of a consensus.
Oh, no, I wasn't asking for a consensus, I just wanted to make sure the manager was...
No, I, I think he's, he's prepared to provide the response that you've asked for.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure, sir, you have the floor.
I don't think there was a consensus from the council on anything like that. There was a couple of people that spoke, and I took it upon myself to go and visit the actual scene of this, right? And what we've done is hired a contractor that can go deeper than our, our current staff could go. We have about a five, five-foot depth that we can go into, but we had, we hired contractors that go deeper in that. But they're actually onsite now, working. They've been there for, over the last week. We anticipate that the, the pipe that they're trying to get to is approximately 15 feet deep, so they're trenching to get to that point, to, we've already sent cameras through the pipes to make sure that there was no blockage or anything like that. The problem that is at hand at that particular resident is that they have a connection that is not, they have a pipe that is not connected to the city sewer. What we're trying to determine now is, was that pipe ever connected to the city sewer? And what do we need to do to address that? Okay, so that's where we are with that.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, so back to the school budget discussion. So, so I agree with what everybody has, has said to this point around not pushing that decision to the end and having some options to understand, you know, how we move money around to cover the bill. Just to share with, with my colleagues a little bit of detail from the school board liaison meeting that, that Councilwoman Bryant and I had with the manager and the, and Dr. Patillo, Mr. Bracy, or the other day, Dr. Bracy. You know, one of the, so first, you remember, we gave the city manager our authority to go negotiate, and he's doing that, and that process is, is, is ongoing. And, and by all accounts, both of them appear to be agreeing that we're making progress. In fact, before our school board liaison meeting, they met and, and had some additional negotiations and are working through things. But, but during the liaison meeting, we, we talked about some specifics that are gonna impact the budget, and one that's kind of important is the General Assembly passed legislation to lift the cap on SOQ positions, and so, that's what's sitting on the governor's desk now, but we won't know until the governor signs or doesn't sign or doesn't agree with or agrees with, and I guess that's May the second. And so, on May the second, we'll find out, is there relief on SOQ positions? If there is, then that's additional state revenue that's gonna come to Portsmouth Public Schools that potentially helps to pay the, the difference that we're, that we're arm-wrestling over right now. So, so, and when we talked about that at the liaison meeting, the school, the school CFO said, yes, but the Lord giveth, the Lord taketh away. You know, the state's gonna potentially give us SOQ money, but there also may be some places where, where they pull revenue back, and so, we won't, we, PPS, and the manager won't know the kind of full revenue picture that's coming from the state to pay for schools until the governor signs what he signs and somebody does the math problem to tell us what's really coming to the schools and therefore what's left for the city council to fund in the, in the, in the budget. And so, while we're a little impatient to get insight into what's going on, we, we're just gonna have to be patient for a little while longer until some of these big pieces kind of fall into place, so that we then can kind of finalize what, what are the options to fully fund and, and what are the consequences? What do we, what do we need to take away from if we're, if we're gonna find, find that other $3 million?
Attorney Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you for bringing up that point. I do, I do, I'm putting sort of two and two together, and I think everyone is, is trying to be as delicate about the situation as possible, but, but for those of us who have to draft this and make sure that it's accurate for you to vote on, what should be very clear from this is that if you intend to pull from a source that needs to be cited in our budget resolution or ordinance, that that be done in advance of the thirteenth. I do not want a situation where we are in the back and my staff is running around crazy trying to put, switch things around, and there are errors and problems. So, if you all could have whatever discussions you are thinking about and where you intend to have these scenarios, please share that with me as soon as possible, so that we can have alternatives ready to go, because I'm going to suggest a point of order that we do not consider anything that has not been properly vetted prior to that. Thank you.
Fair enough. With that in mind, are there any other, other more items to be submitted by council? Well, I have one more item. On next Friday, the second of May, we will have our State of the City, the Portsmouth State of the City Address will be at Rivers Casino at 12 o'clock PM is the start time. We'll have a full house of folks, and if you want to know how your city is working and you want to hear it firsthand, please show up and be there. Thank you very much. Moving right along to Item Twenty-Five-Dash-One-One-Six, Report on Pending Items. Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We've provided a report back, the information has been provided to you through email in your pocket, so if you have any questions about that, please let me know, but we'll, we'll make that report to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've now come to Item Twenty-Five-Dash-One-One-Eight, Non-Agenda Speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light, and at, and at five minutes, at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or audience, and should be limited... of city council staff or audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Schwanzetta Williams. Welcome, ma'am. If you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Schwanzetta Williams, 4049 Cory Lane, Chesapeake, Virginia. To the Honorable Mayor Shannon Glover, Honorable Vice Mayor William Moody, and the distinguished members of the Portsmouth City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I am Schwanzetta Williams, President of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and I bring you greetings on behalf of the more than 240 members. We are honored to join you tonight as we continue our annual tradition of Delta Days at Portsmouth City Hall. For more than 80 years, the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter has proudly served the citizens of our communities, advocating for policies that strengthen and enhance our neighborhoods and uplift our citizens. We recognize the importance of active participation in local government and applaud each of you for your dedicated service to our city. As we've done in previous years, our chapter has outlined our legislative priorities for 2025, aligned with our National Social Action Commission's focus areas. While we recognize that all seven of our national priorities are vital to our community's well-being, tonight we wish to highlight five critical areas where we believe our collective efforts can make the most immediate impact. Those areas are voting and civic engagement, economic justice, educational justice, reimagining public safety and public health safety, reproductive freedom, and maternal health. Voting and civic engagement. As an organization deeply committed to voting rights for all citizens, we remain concerned about voter apathy in Portsmouth. We continue to engage our communities year-round on voting rights, access, and mobilization because we understand that a strong democracy requires active participation. We would like to explore how our chapter can continue to partner with the city to provide relevant voter education materials that demonstrate how each election directly affects daily life experiences, from tolls and infrastructure to education and funding and job creation. We serve on the front line with fortitude as we engage the community by registering, educating, and mobilizing them to exercise their right to vote. We are the teachers helping our young people understand the importance of voting and civic engagement. We are the leaders in our community that help to address these issues and concerns. We are truth-tellers, combating misinformation and holding elected officials accountable. Additionally, we seek your thoughts on engaging our youth in civic-minded programs and establishing voter education in earlier stages in their development. Economic justice. With approximately 17% of Portsmouth's population living in poverty, affordable housing remains an urgent concern. During recent town hall meetings, residents shared troubling stories, living in some developments without heat during winter months, and expressing feelings of being forgotten as only certain areas of Portsmouth see improvement. We ask, what initiatives are currently in place to address affordable housing in Portsmouth, and how do you plan to make housing more accessible for lower-income families? And most importantly, how can our organization support these efforts? When it comes to reimagining public safety, we understand that public safety is not just about increasing policing or incarceration. Real public safety concerns come from dramatic investment in addressing root-cause trauma, economic insecurity, educational disparities, homelessness, and ensuring that Portsmouth has safe drinking water. We ask each council member, in terms of reimagining public safety, what does it mean to you personally and politically? What investments are being made in our social services and youth programs? With our federal government's plans to terminate Lake Mead Dam infrastructure program entirely, canceling all of the current funding, and including projects that have already received approval, we believe this program's funds are critical to helping Portsmouth. We ask, what are the members of this body doing to ensure that Portsmouth has safe drinking water? And what are the council's budget plans to fortify Lake Mead? And to support... And how can we support those educational efforts? Lastly, reproductive freedom and maternal health. Our community faces challenges in maternal health services. Currently expecting mothers must travel to other cities.
Finish your thought.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. We seek updates on securing facilities where expecting mothers can remain in Portsmouth and deliver their babies safely, and we stand readily able, and we are supporting those efforts even on this Saturday. Make no mistake, the work we're doing is not for show, but for real progress and for genuine opportunity to create a more unified and cohesive city. Social action is who we are and what we do as members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We attend Delta Days at Portsmouth City Hall annually to engage, empower, and elevate our social action agenda. As members of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, we will not shrink from undertaking what seems wise and good because handicaps or obstacles of any kind confront us. As challenges and longstanding issues continue to affect our fundamental human rights, we remain steadfast in our commitment to addressing them. As long as these issues persist, so must we. We look forward to our continued engagement with the members of this council and the citizens of Portsmouth as we work collectively to ensure a better future for our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Nanette Holly. Our next speaker is Elsie Levin or Levine? I'm sorry, did I pronounce your name wrong? Excuse me? Okay, come on forward. I'm sorry. You said it was Levine?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address. Take your time.
I'm Elsie Levine. I'm a new resident of Portsmouth, and my address is 6509... Oh, sorry. Yes. I'm a new resident of Portsmouth. My name is Elsie Levine, and my address is 6509 Bickford Lane, apartment 204 Portsmouth, Virginia. Mayor and council, I believe that it's a core interest of the public and the city to ensure that all business is conducted in an honest and transparent manner throughout the city. So as a new resident moving into the Chesapeake Point Apartments at the edge of Portsmouth, I was disappointed to find that many of the promises made by our property manager were not fulfilled and that our residents were not being adequately served within the building. We were promised adequate laundry services so that we could clean our clothes without going to a laundromat, and I was very disappointed to find that not only is management not supporting the maintenance of our washer and dryer machines, but they are removing washer and dryers from the buildings and that there is only a couple of washer and dryers to serve 32 units in our cul-de-sac. Most of the residents are going to a laundromat across the street, and I think that this is honestly a misrepresentation of the services that I was, you know, informed of when I signed my lease. Our maintenance is inadequate. We were promised modern appliances, or at least a complete set of appliances, and air-conditioning units in every unit. Well, my dishwasher was broken when I moved into the apartment and hasn't been fixed for a week, and management, the property manager, will not tell us when it's being fixed because the air-conditioning units of several residents that were poorly maintained have broken down in the middle of summer, and they have to survive over 80-degree temperatures without air conditioning. So in conclusion, I think it's well within the authority of the city to require adequate inspections, to require that statements by property managers and landlords be honest and fair, and that our residents are adequately served in terms of the conditions of the apartments that they have to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Brenda Rockwell. Ms. Rockwell, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brenda Rockwell, and I live at 1701 Atlanta Avenue. I am on the corner of Atlanta and Randolph. And the reason for my getting up here tonight is to talk about better enforcement of city rules and ordinances that are already on the books. As I said, I live on Atlanta, and the house behind me at 1701 Camden Street burned down last April. That's April 2024. Prior to purchasing my home last August, I called the city multiple times to ask why the lot had not been cleared. This was in August. The house burned down in April, and I could see that the signs on the doors said the house was supposed to have been torn down. The lot cleared within two weeks. I was promised that change was in the works, but first there had to be legal notices served, responses received, and waiting periods observed. Rinse and repeat. I won't bore you with the timeline, but I'll say that between December and present day, I have called and made complaints with the city inspections officers, and they have been friendly in their response, and they have promised action, but there's no enforcement. The last person I spoke to in the city inspection office was the assistant manager, and this was the week of Easter, so just last week. And he said that the reason there has been little progress is because the city allows you to start the demo work, stop, but you've technically got six months to finish this work. But once you go out there, you start, you do some work, and you stop, that six months resets. So it's this vicious cycle that the demo guy can go out there for an hour or two, do a little work, and then knows that there's no enforcement teeth behind it, that he can just push this off for another however long he feels like it. In the meantime, people are coming and dumping their trash in the dumpster. If there's no room in the dumpster, they just dump it right there, and it's getting closer and closer to infringing on my property. And I... Obviously, I'm very upset by this, but I'm just appalled that the city doesn't have any teeth behind this six-months ordinance. So I'm asking the city to look into what the inspector told me, and I don't know if he understands it exactly right, but this is what was told to me just last week, that you can go out there, do some work, and then that six-month deadline that you originally had resets. So it feels like there's this vicious loop that he can just keep going out there, doing a little work, and stopping and starting. And I'd really like to see less public dumping and more clearing, final clearing of that lot. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Rockwell, the manager wanted to direct you in a direction so that you may get some help. So if you just hold a minute, we're going to work very hard to get you some help.
Okay.
So go ahead. Just direct him... You have the floor, sir.
I'm sorry, if you're through with your comments...
I am, thank you.
Would you see Ms. Hogg? She's sitting right there in front, and she'll take your information, and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, I want to echo or kind of address what Ms. Rockwell just brought to our attention regarding... Is that the timeline cycle that starts? I know we have it for... We talked about this recently, larger, you know, construction where the land, you know, you need... Developers need that time. Is that... Can we explore that city attorney to get more information behind how we kind of address that issue?
These are very specific timelines to specific types of demolition, so facts matter. And so if we could report back to you once we confirm with those facts...
Yes, and that's fine, yes. That's what I was looking for, the facts behind that. Because that's... In addition to that, she reminded me, I had a citizen send me a video of public dumping happening behind another house as well. So I think she brings up a great point about addressing how we can maybe be tighter. I don't know if we have any loopholes, but the facts would be great to get to address that issue.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I wanted to echo that sentiment in that I've received a number of complaints about this issue of it being reset, and I wanted to know if we could explore that ordinance and how we could revise it to give it some more teeth.
Well, it has plenty of teeth. Property is constitutional, and so we're balancing the governmental interest and the property owner's rights, which is highly, highly tantamount in Virginia. And so I'm not saying what your position is is incorrect. I'm just saying there's a balancing act that happens there. And so what I will do is, if you would forward any requests that you have through the 3-1-1 system that we have so that they're tickers on what's happening, I can look at those facts and get somebody write to you to tell you exactly what's happening, and then you can then let me know if there's something there that requires more that you're looking for than a general statement. Is that perfect? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Adaldogutrowski. State your name and address. You have five minutes.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, I want to express my appreciation to a member of council who was very responsive to some written inquiries I submitted to you collectively and who took the initiative to address them to the city manager. The city manager responded in a very prompt manner and provided answers that were completely satisfactory. So this is unaccustomed service, and I'd like to see more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Steve Whitehead. Steve Whitehead, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Council, and other city dignitaries, I'm here tonight after 42 years of complaining about the same problem with the city. And what I'm talking about is a violation of the state code requiring the city vehicles to be covered by a tarp when they're moving with debris in it. That code reads as Code of Virginia Title 46.2 Motor Vehicles, Chapter 10 Motor Vehicle Equipment and Safety. Subsection 46.2156 Construction, Maintenance, and Loading Must Prevent Escape of Contents, Load Covers, and Exemptions. It states, "No vehicle, no vehicle, shall be operated or moved on any highway unless it's so constructed, maintained, and loaded as to prevent its contents from dropping, sifting, leaking, or otherwise escaping. No provision of this section, however, shall apply to any motor vehicle that is used exclusively for agriculture." We're not a farm, so that doesn't apply to us. It reads down further in Section B. "The loads of all trucks, trailers, and semi-trailers carrying gravel, sand, coal, or other non-agricultural and non-forestry products on interstate, primary, or secondary highways or roads maintained by cities, counties, or incorporated towns shall either secure the vehicle in which they are being transported or covered." And I could read the whole thing, and it's not but a few more sentences. But I first came here in 1983 when the debris was falling on the Churchland Bridge that I traveled over every day to go to Western Branch Diesel. I live at 4419 County Street, and I've lived there 72 of my 75 years, other than the two years the Marine Corps sent me to Vietnam on a sightseeing tour. The debris falls off those trucks because they're not covered, and each time I get involved, the city appears to act like they want to do the right thing. At one time, they bought sway cars from a former city manager, Phineas Horton. They covered those finally. The picture you have before you, one is of a city truck that has a spring-loaded tarp on it. The other one is of a general truck with a tarp, and it shows in the subset picture of the spring. Those things are spring-loaded to cover and either manually returned or electrically returned. They're anywhere from $1,200 to $5,800, $6,000, depending on the length and how nice you make that cover. I call on, I've been in the truck business since 1971. I've called on end-users and dealers all over the United States. I see trucks going to be delivered to end-users that have these on them when they buy the truck. The city should do that. You're not exempt. If you go across the new Churchland Bridge, the new section of Churchland Bridge, there's debris that's been on there for four weeks since I've called the city. Four weeks. And a lot of you council people cross that bridge to go home. I don't understand why you're not upset about it like I am. It doesn't make our city look good. It's just not normal. And we spend more money to go pick it up and endanger the people that do that than just putting a cover on and keeping it from falling off to go to Crane Island landfill. It's not on the eastern side of the bridge, nothing's coming back this way. It's not on the eastern side of the western of the bridge, nothing's coming back this way. It's the city vehicles going to Crane Island. So hopefully, I won't have to come back again, and the city manager can look at seeing what he has to do. A lot of the vehicles have them on there, but they're either broken or damaged. That picture you have is from 2018, and I think that vehicle now, that tarp is not functional on that one, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sheila Joseph. Ms. Sheila Joseph, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I wanted to talk about the pump stations that we have. I did research throughout in different areas as far as DC and whatnot. We never could pinpoint how many pump stations we have in the city of Portsmouth. And I remember saying that this city is stopped up, but I don't think people took me serious. And one day, I was going to take a lady to dinner, and over to Emma Spa at that time, the pipe bust, and they had to shut all the water off, for an example. But then, in some areas, I go and take pictures, and people got sewage backed up from the city area going into their home. And I've been asked time to time from any of the leadership for years to look at my pictures, and it can help you understand what's going on. You're spending a lot of money for studying and different things, the cameras and whatnot going in the pipe and everything, but I'm not going to complain about what you're not doing, but I'm gonna complain about what you're doing that's costing a lot of money. And I have had people to tell me that they were hired to do certain jobs in this city, and it costs a lot of money. Why they don't listen to me because I know what I'm talking about, because I take pictures of these pipes and how old. And if you remember, go back to my website, www.twcmadonline.com. I gave it for the world to look at, including you all, to look at what I'm talking about, about the money that Congress got and others, and the president said, "A trillion-dollar rebuild America." So I addressed that issue, and Congress got reassured me that we have enough money, like I say, for example, $738 million in Virginia. Some people might think that ain't enough to fix the old pipes, but I'm thankful to say today, y'all are doing some of that stuff in the city of Portsmouth, and I come back to let you know I appreciate it, to move the old pipes and the sewage and drainage, I want to say that much. And some people don't do nothing but complain, but they don't do the homework that I do. My pictures speak for itself. Now, I wanted to know that the system that y'all putting in with these pump stations, when would it be put in place and tell the citizens how many we're gonna have in the city that's appropriately to serve our city? Also, I wanted to know how much it costs us. Respond to my questions, because a lot of times, no one responds to me in writing when I write a letter or anything I got to ask questions about, because I feel as a taxpayer that I should know what's going on. Another issue I wanted to say, for example, if I'm told that we dumping sewage behind Farm Fresh, that we sucking out a different comp to go to the HRSD treatment plant, and I talked to the treatment plant, and they said that's what they are, but we bill in the city of Portsmouth according to the water bill for our HRSD, you know, prices. So it's a combination of things that I have questioned for, that maybe a lot of people want to talk to each other, but they need to talk to you all, and I don't blame everybody for what's going on in our city. Everybody have a part to do, the citizens, the churches, the nonprofit, y'all got your part, and I thank Mr. Carter. He came here on the 19th, and I told him, I said, "It'll be almost a year," you know, and it is a year, and what, a few days? He's been doing a wonderful job because I've been researching on what's going on in this city. Y'all ain't seen me since September because I was in school, but I want to say I quit because I had to get back into the motion of what's going on. So I thank y'all for what you are doing. It's a lot of work in this city. And I told my son, I remember as a kid coming on the bus, and this city looked like a ghost town. It still looked that way, and we got a casino to, you know, contribute to help us.
Thank you, ma'am.
We got to do it together, not just you all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Garland Alexander. Sir, you come forward, state your name and address, you have five minutes.
Garland Alexander, 2913 Tan Mark Lane. Maybe I can approach two more that didn't seem fit our way tonight. You know, maybe you're willing to throw these witters a crumb and make it, instead of $25, instead of making it $1,500 to make it $2,000? It's, I mean, you can call it cost of living, whatever you want to call it, but we need, there's some people that need some help. It's not me, I'm fine, I'm fine, but there's people that need some help other than what we just talked about. So we would appreciate if you would consider something more for the people that need it the most, and I like to have, I didn't recognize some of the people that's with me to stand up and show their support for my items.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Jack Lilienthal. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business for the Goodody Order? Seeing none, that concludes our speakers, and that concludes our meeting for tonight. And you all drive home safe. This meeting is adjourned.